This is the first time I have been in a long time.
I know you'll be pleased to hear that we're going to adjourn into executive session right off the bat. Our city attorney has to leave right away practically. And I promise you that this will be a very short one. There are two matters on there that will not take very long. And that way we'll expedite his leaving. He's leaving for Alaska tomorrow and he wants to be prepared. Have a motion please.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Oh wait a minute, I'm sorry.
I'll call the roll. Mayor?
Present.
First Ward, here.
Second Ward.
Here.
Third Ward, here.
Fourth Ward.
Here.
Fifth Ward.
Here.
Sixth Ward.
Here.
I'll present it.
Do we have the motion again?
Motion to adjourn in the executive session.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Carry. Be right back. Motion to reconvene.
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. First item please.
City clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting at 7:30 PM relative to a special use permit requested submitted by Russ Johnson and Joe Regal for their property located at 18 North 7th Street for removing an existing garage and replacing it with a new garage with an apartment. The hearing is now declared open.
Any comments? Yes.
I'm opposed to it.
Come on, come on please and address the mic and give your name. I wish everybody would do that who wishes to speak. Yes.
My name is Richard Scott. I'm opposed to this motion. I've got some literature here that I would like to give to the common council, the mayor, the common council, the people. Number one, this is a letter to the hearing. Number two, this is the Planning Commission's report. Which, the Planning Commission report was given out on February 16th, 93. They didn't act on it in 45 days. May 4th, the common council, by not acting on it, passed the resolution without submitting to the public a hearing for or against.
You mean there's no recommendation by the common, the Planning Commission?
No. On May 10th, the Planning Commission, with five out of seven members, they voided the special use permit, stating that the property was not large enough and adequate enough for another building. I have copies here for all the councilmen. If they'd like it, may I pass them on?
Sure.
Can you read with the common council? Chris, now then.
Thank you.
Put anybody up? Now, the common council did not, or the Planning Commission did not act within the 45 days, so the common council went ahead and passed the resolution, but they did not notify the people within 100 feet of the boundaries of what was going on. I'm not a good speaker, excuse me.
It's alright.
Okay. Now, the lot size... I have what we put up for lot sizes for most of the homes in the city of Fulton. We're in an R2 usage. And an R2 usage cost for 800 square feet, or pardon me, 8,000. The width is 60, 25% of the building occupancy. A lot of this I don't know. It can only be two and a half stories, 35 feet high. Got to have a front yard of 25 feet, one side of five, the other side 10, or one or two sides got to equal 15 or more. And a backside of 40 feet. I'll get to that later. I got a petition of approximately 21 people in the neighborhood. I would say 90% of them live within the 100-foot boundaries. All the people, I never went more than three houses either way. I contacted everyone personally except one person. I should take that back. Mr. Regal, Mr. Russ Johnson, we talked about this before. I was not able to contact one of his relatives. Out of the 21 people, I got one that signed a petition yes, 14 signed it no. I would say Mr. Regal and Mr. Johnson was signing yes, and his relatives would too. And we had four did not want to get involved. May I pass these?
Sure. Thank you. It's okay.
Okay. On that, that tells the people who is for and who against. Now, talking with Mr. Johnson prior to this, I have a copy of my lot, which is adjoining to him on Seneca Street. This is the special permit with the common council passed on May 4th, but I had to rescind because nobody was notified. I have here two copies of first story and second story, what they wanted in the building. The building is actually, if you people, I'll pass it around, is 35 by 35. But they carried it with a 35 by 28 with an elm cove made into it so they can make it legal for the tolerance of the building that's already there. If anybody would like to read or look at these, that's all I got is this. I'll pass it around. This is my deed copy. This is a map. Can you see this people? Do you want me standing? As we're looking at this map, this is North 7th Street, this is Seneca Street. This is my property. This is Mr. Regal and Mr. Johnson's property. There is also a house on that property now, which...
Is that the parcel in red?
All red are parcels that are there. The one down here, which they tore down, and they want to put a new one, which is in yellow, on the same parcel land.
So there'll be two buildings on the land?
There is one now. They're going to put another.
There'll be two on the land then?
There will be two on it.
What's the dimensions of the property?
100 by 72 foot six. There is 7,250 square feet in that property. Which my property, joined next to it, has got 6,912 square feet. But, with the map that I showed, new dwellings should have 8,000 square feet. Now, they want to put two dwellings, a second new dwelling, on the same property that's only got 700, or 7,250 square feet. They already got one there. Now they want to put a new one there.
And the existing building is a dwelling?
The existing building is in operation. I will get to that in a minute. I just wanted to show the people, and you, when, if, the existing building that they talk about will be approximately 17 feet from my house. And if they want to go two and a half story building, while I say two and a half, a garage, a second story apartment roof, we're talking 25, 27 feet height. This property on this side is already approximately 28 inches higher. We live in a terrace area. At 17 feet from my house, where they're coming off, they will block, which my house is 54 feet one inch long, they will block 31 feet of my house, where I cannot see. It will be a dark spot there. They'll come down through, and that's what I've had to look at. And I've been in this place for 23 years. Most of the neighborhood that's been in there are 25 years and above. We also got, on this here, a house that was for years a single-family dwelling. It was made two years ago in a two-family dwelling. Does anybody want to see this?
Is this the, the house that Russ Johnson owns?
This is the house that he remodeled.
The one that was made into a two-family?
This is the one he remodeled, which been there for, God, you got people there, been living there for 50 years.
Right, but that was a single family and he put it into a multifamily.
Right. It was a single family for years. What it did, father and son, daughters moved in and out, but they never rented. Now it has two mailing addresses. It's a literally a two-family house.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody want to see this?
Do you live in the two-family house north of there?
I live west of there. I live at this address right here on Seneca Street. I've lived there for 23 years. I live on one half of it, and my mother lives on the other half.
Okay. So you live in the house directly behind him?
I live on the side of him. Mr. Johnson owned a house on this other side, which, that's his property. That's a two-family. So in this corner, we got three two-family houses. Do you want this here?
And then there's a two-family across the street also, correct?
I don't know if it's legally two-family or not. That's, you'd have to ask Mr. Regal. That's where he was lived, raised and bought up. Pardon me?
I do have one question here. In this petition that you gave us, it says that in favor of a zone change, and there's one yes, and then the rest of them are no, but a special use permit and a zone change are two different things.
I'm only going with the common council sent out on the letter.
I just didn't want any disclarification on that, because this, this does say zone change, and a special use permit is different from a zone change.
Well, it's an original proposal that was back on June 1st. It says, "Rescind resolutions, special use permit." And it gives the number, which I went to City Hall, to Mr. Lund. We found out, under the old book and under the new book, there's two different numbers. I do have the number if somebody wants it under the new book, but I'm just going with, the letter went out, what they rescind, what he's going for. That answer question?
There may be a fly in this ointment anyway. A flyer that I received recently from Nikon shows that there is pending legislation now that apparently has a good chance of passing. It's going to make some very important changes in zoning laws. And one of them deals with a special use permit. And the article, as I saw it, implied that there is no such thing as a special use permit. And I think that's something that ought to be checked out before this is passed on by the council. Because if the council, I'm sure doesn't want to pass anything that may turn out to be illegal to begin with.
May I go on to another subject then, before I finish the other one?
Sure.
I went to City Hall. Special use permits were passed by the common council in 89. There have been a total of, six of them given out. They passed one for Mr. Regal and Mr. Johnson, but they had to rescind it. Fulton Tool, they passed one which is on Skyler Street on 2789, which after what the common council started. At the same time, that same date, at the same address, they gave another special use permit under Bruce and Phillips. Same address, same place, so I imagine it's Fulton Tool. That was two of them. In 9589, there was given one out for McCann Construction, which is over on Erie Street, which is another business. And in 7390, Lester Goldberg on First Street got one, which is another business. Goldar Oil Company on West First Street at 8691 received a special use permit, which is a business. The same day, Stanley Gray at the same address got a special use permit. So it must have been commercial business. Now, the only other residential that got one was Mr. Zeller. He got one over on West Fourth Street, which is residential. That is a special use. It's going up all the time. If you look at the charter from the Planning Commission meeting, at that meeting, they had two special use permits they wanted to go through. One was in an R1, which they refused because R1s cannot have it. One is the one we're talking about now, which they denied. But it didn't get to the common council within the amount of time. Okay, everybody understand that part? I also told you the house was converted. At the time, like I say, I've lived there 23 years. I got neighbors who've been there 50 years. Of all the time I was there, the people that had it, one vehicle. Mr. Johnson, Mr. Regal moved in, made a two-family house. There is, at the average, most generally, six vehicles at that property. The property next to it, which is going south, is Mr. Johnson and another partner, is a two-family house. There is four vehicles there. I live west on Seneca Street with a two-family house, which we usually have two. Now, we got three properties there on an average of 12 vehicles. Kind of high. If they get that and make more apartments in there, more houses, more vehicles, it's not, no more residential, or make it into a housing complex. Okay, now, with this house being so close to my property, and with the pitch... I got the literature here over the house size. With the water runoff coming into my side of my house, coming onto terraces, there bound to be erosion. Number two, on the map, you see there was a garage there that was 16 by 21. The snow blows around there, and my driveway gets three-quarters full now, because it hits there, just plugs it in. Now, if they put a building that covers 31 foot of my house, what kind of snow removal am I going to have? That puts an awful strain on me, plus you can't see nothing, it's blocking. It's so high, it'll be a dark shadow because the sun don't come up there until it gets way over the top, warms around to the west. That would go give it the poor lighting, the poor sun exposure. Also stops me from, you know, enjoying my property. When I sit in my house, I got to look at a 20 or better foot wall of a side of a house. Which I don't think I have to take that. My neighbors that look around it, I don't think they have to look at another two-story dwelling on one partial land. And if they put two properties on this one piece of two buildings, which is equivalent to two homes, and the average home is 28 by 40, they already got one there, they want to come close to the other. Are they willing to pay double the taxes to get one lot that the city says is only equivalent for one house, they want to put two on it? And it's going to hinder the property. You look around the city of Fulton, any place where these multi-rental properties went up, there'd been a lot of problems. This has been a quiet neighborhood for, like I say, I've been there 23 years. There's people out there that have been there for 50 years. They all got big properties. Are you telling them that next month they can all get a special use permit and build another house behind theirs? It just don't make sense to me. We make laws for everybody, and now we're trying to give out a little piece here, a little piece there. I guess that's all I had to say, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Russ?
Thank you.
Joe Regal?
For those of you who don't know me, Russ Johnson. Well, to start with, there is some inaccuracies in the dimensions of the building, and perhaps that's why so many people a couple of months ago, or a month ago, had some opposition to the L-framed building, as in particular. What we have here, what we are proposing is a 28 by 40 three-car garage. On top of the garage would be an apartment. The apartment would be mustered by myself and Mr. Regal.
Building is not L-shaped, just to clear up that drawing that Mr. Scott presented.
And on the petitions, I'm not so sure just exactly what was, what was told to the people in the surrounding neighborhood, but we too have had some petitions of, the majority of the people in the neighborhood. We outlined exactly what our proposal was that we're going to present here today. And we had one written disagreement. We will have to include now, obviously, Mr. Scott's and Mr. Smith's, but we didn't get to him in time for the...
I'll be up there. I'll be up there.
Okay. Just to back up a little bit, back in April and May, we submitted a petition to the Planning Commission. Their duties, part of their duties are to act upon that petition. That never happened. According to city law, we would then be considered approved for this. However, we didn't want to do that. We wanted to bring this before the city fathers, the people who make law, who can change law, who can amend law. We brought it before you people, you people voted on it. It intended on being a very good building. We've talked to appraisers, and every appraiser that we've talked to says it only can increase the value of your property and existing properties around. We had the director of code enforcement, Mr. Lund, over to research everything to make sure the property would fit, or the building would fit. No problems, he says it would fit. The map here, or the chart that I believe Mr. Scott was referring to, may have left out the first box there, which might be able to answer some questions. I'm going to read it here. This is for an R2 residency, R2 district. There are several prohibited, permitted principal uses of that property. Number one, R1 use, it's actually just a single-family. Number two, two-family dwellings. Number three, selected public and semi-public health institutions. Number four, home occupations. And number five, three or four family dwellings by conversion of structure. Our argument is that we took down the dilapidated garage that was probably half the size of this proposed building. That garage was a bigger eyesore than a brand-new building could be by far. We have pictures. I didn't get the enlargements of the pictures going up in time. I would like to have done that. And no way is this building going to cause a problem for sunlight that, like Mr. Scott had mentioned. If you looked at the sun in the last couple of months after this semi-battle, I've had a lot of time to look at the sun. I've seen how the sun flows, and we all know that it flows from east to west. The first couple hours in the morning, we are going to be blocking sunlight. However, after 10 o'clock, for the next two to three hours, that sun is directly on both pieces of property. Then it starts going the other way. Then we get blocked by the sun. So it's give and take there. We have these permitted, these petitions, if folks would like to see them. We didn't make copies of them. Yeah?
We have some blueprints of the property.
Of what it's going to look like.
This is what you'd be seeing from North 7th Street. The entrance to the property would be on North 7th Street. The 28 by 40, it's not L-shaped. This is the north, north end, south end of the building. North end, outside. This is the, the west end of the building. This is the view Mr. Scott would be seeing.
We got to take into consideration now, before we, we took down that old dilapidated structure that was a major eyesore, Mr. Scott's view was limited. He couldn't see because of that building, obviously. And our house is directly facing west, that we're living in now. Therefore, the only, the only street that he would be able to see in activity is that, which is going to happen at the intersection of 7th and South, or 7th and South of the street, North 7th. As far as the, the argument or the concern of the water drainage, the erosion, that's a legitimate concern. All of these concerns are legitimate. We have, we have designed... We have, we have designed two ways to defeat that. One is gonna be the champ. Obviously, that gets dirty, so then the water will fall down. We're gonna construct a cement gully that will go right to the street, and whatever rainwater comes out, we'll be able to go down to the side of the street. This is a wood in the other building. This is not gonna cause a problem. What this is gonna do is it's gonna make the area look nicer. We wanna accomplish that, obviously, by the special use permit. And we bring it before you people, because it's been brought before you once, and now he's entitled to the public hearing, we're entitled to that, we had it. We ask that you consider, you consider voting on this today, so that we can move forward with the plans that we have, if it goes in our favor.
Well, Russ, you want to vote on today, supposing special use permits are not permitted by the state, and it's voted on, and then has to be rescinded, how would you feel about that?
As far as I know, I don't know of any legislation that's enacted now that says special use permits aren't legal.
Well, as I say, I received a flyer, and it certainly indicated that, and I would think that'd be something you wanna have cleared up before the council votes on.
I agree with you. If that's gonna be an issue.
Well, it's possible.
Is this something that's gonna be ruled out? Or it has been?
There's legislation, there's legislation pending right now, that is going to make a lot of changes in the zoning law. And one of them was permitting special use permits. Which implies that they're not permitted at the present time.
Right, but would the places that have the special use permits on them now, would they be grandfathered?
I have no idea.
I mean, I guess that would be the question.
I can't see how they can go back on Don Zeller and Glider Oil and Academy Construction and Bruce Gals.
So let us have a special use permit. I don't see what harm that's gonna cause in the future. We could speculate that down the road, laws are gonna change.
That's not the issue, that's not what I'm saying. Now we know there's a possibility special use permits are not permitted in the state. If they act knowing that that's a possibility, then it is void, and then you got a real serious problem. It's not like special use permits that have been passed in the, in the past, where the council did not know that that may be the case. Now, knowing that's the case, and they go ahead with it, creates a very serious potential problem.
Did you hear any look into that?
Yeah, I'd say table it till he can look into it, see what is the status of these permits. I mean, that, I would think would be to everybody's advantage.
Just one other thing, though. There's also been mention made of the neighborhood, people in the neighborhood. They've lived there for forty, fifty years, twenty years. Let's look at that building the way it is now, and let's look at the history of how he and I have operated. Has that place looked as nice as it does now? Did it look that, that nice ten, four, five years ago?
They didn't look that way.
Oh, we do. You have to show that we're concerned and we care. Okay, that's another question. Let, one person here...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, Russ. No, I don't think we ought to have this kind of colloquy. I think each person should have their opportunity to speak, but if you have a colloquy going back and forth between the members of the audience, you're gonna wind up with confusion. They can have their opportunity to speak.
Any other questions on the construction of the building?
Russ? If you were to build only a garage and not the apartment, could you still do it that, of that size?
Yes, sir.
Without getting any variances from the zoning board of appeals?
He seems to be accurate, Mr. Scott, when he says that it would be over twenty-five percent, but it's gonna be three percent over twenty-five percent as far as both existing buildings. It's not gonna make a difference, it's gonna be square footage. Total square footage for that piece of property is seventy-two hundred square feet. With this proposed building, twenty-five percent of that would have to be less than eighteen hundred. We're gonna have, with both buildings, it's gonna be twenty, it's gonna be about two thousand and forty-two. We're gonna be a couple hundred square feet over the requirement as far as twenty-five percent goes.
About three percent.
Which is probably something that would have to be entertained in a resolution if it was to get that far.
You recited one of the permitted uses under R2, and the last one was a converted building. Are you saying that this falls within that category?
Only to a degree, like all these city ordinances, I don't think any of them have too much teeth to be able to make a determination right here.
Well, I don't know, I thought that was pretty specific. If you convert an existing building into something else, apparently that authorizes it.
That building was beyond fair. That building had to be down before it was...
So it doesn't really fall within any of those categories? Or those permitted uses? No, it doesn't fall within those permitted uses.
Right.
Okay, anybody else? Come on, please.
I'm Cy Smith, and I live across the street from Joe and Russ. It's true, they fixed the house up real nice that they bought over there and put two apartments in it. But I can't see putting two, two-family possible homes on one city lot. I don't care for the outside stairway that they wanna put on the outside of the house, it looks like gun smoke, you know? That's not gonna add any beauty to it. And after checking with accessory, they say our value of our property is not gonna go up when you look at two two-family houses on one lot. Plus all the cars, if, well, I look out my window, I could possibly see a parking lot across the street someday. If they convert the bottom to another apartment, I don't know if they can do that or not, but if they can build a forty by twenty-four on, or twenty-eight on one lot with another house, they could probably do anything. I guess that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Smith, how many months out of the year do you live there?
Six months. You know, they thought I lived there three months, but I lived there six. My wife is a New York State resident.
I'm here with distinguished council members. I come here not only as the brother of Russ Johnson and friend of Joe Regal, but as a past resident of the sixth ward for twenty-two years, a current resident of the third ward, a taxpayer, and a concerned citizen. I'd like to take this opportunity to tell you what a benefit to the city this project would be. In a time when the city is trying to beautify its existing properties, this is no time to deny these gentlemen a permit to build a wonderful new home based on the disgruntled opinion of a few who really have no idea just how much this property will reflect positively on their own. I understand that there are those who do not wish to see this property further developed because they're afraid that their property values will decrease, or because their view may be obstructed by the house. I'd like to see how a new home being built in an older section of the city can decrease property values, if anything, neighboring homes would likely increase in value. Russ and Joe's neighbors, Mr. Scott, has told others in the area, this is what I've heard, that they will be slum lords once the building's built. I've known Russ and Joe all of their lives.
Point of order, sir.
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, but he's slandering...
All my life... Sorry, Mr. Smith.
I've known him all my life, and these two have respect for themselves, their neighbors, and their property, too much to allow themselves to fit in the so-called category, slum lord. I ask you to look at the record when considering this proposal. Look and see that Russ has transformed Ten North Fourth, Ten North Seventh Street from an older-looking, rundown house to a respectable-looking house which provides a home for two families with plenty of off-street parking. Look again at the former crouch home at the corner of North Seventh and Seneca Street where Russ and Joe live now. This home was completely gutted and remodeled inside and out by both Russ and Joe, and looks better now than it ever has. I'm sure that Mr. Scott and any other doubters would agree with me on this as well. One must also examine the new revenue that would be created for city and water, sewer, and general taxes. I ask you to look at all of this as you decide what course of action you will take. Don't let this project die because of one man's thoughts about what this situation may be in the future. They have proven the opposite. This will be a beautiful addition to the area, and I'm sure that a much larger number of persons in the area, not necessarily the ones within a hundred feet of the home, I know a lot of those people myself that have been there for thirty, forty, fifty years, and I haven't gone to get petitions, but I've talked to some of them, and they agree that this is a good venture. I'm sure that they would agree as well. In closing, I'd like to say that these gentlemen are willing to make an investment and commitment to this city. Let's give them our support, and show that others in the city of Fulton, and show others in the city of Fulton that we stand for progress. Thank you.
Thank you.
Point of order, sir.
Sure.
Number one, this gentleman never come and asked me my opinion. Number two, he does not live in the neighborhood. Number three, I've been against this, and I told these boys, circa two years ago, I call them boys, they're young men. Not once did I ever mention that they would become slum lords. This man has slandered the neighborhood, you've got to sign petition of people there that says, and not one of them that are in this room that I ever talked to said that they were gonna be slum lords. So when this man comes up and starts slandering us, if the city attorney here, we could think to maybe have a lawsuit. Now, if he wants to make a statement about what he can do, that's great, but don't start slandering the people. The people in the neighborhood had just as much to say without slander. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Some of the answers to what Mr. Johnson just said. I asked Joe and Russ here, why didn't they spend six thousand dollars and go out and buy one city lot and build a two-family house? Why try to put two on one lot? 'Cause the taxes are cheaper? Maybe that's why. He says he's gotta put his own sewer and water to that building, so that can't be it. So there must be some reasons for them to want to put two two-family possible homes on one lot.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marty Amos, I live in the sixth ward on Seneca Street. My only beef is, how can you change the size of a lot? It calls for eight thousand foot for one or two-family homes. So how can you put another one on there?
Good question. I guess council has to answer that.
What can they answer?
Well, when they take a vote, they will answer. Thank you. Russ?
Okay, the petitions are both very interesting from both sides. This is the list of names that the city sent out of people within a hundred feet. I see people on here on Ennites Street, which is around the corner of the block. I see people here from leaving the city down on One Seventy-Six, on one petition. So the names don't necessarily match the people that live in the immediate area. I had the opportunity to walk the ward, or that particular street where we have the property in question. I find that some of the people that voted no against it told me yes. And some of the people that said they were neutral told me it was okay. Out of the people that I talked to, I had six responses yes and two no. Now, people could change their mind, I don't know why they did or didn't. Most of the people that voted yes said that there was no problem with both Russ and Joe, they keep the property up well, and they've improved the neighborhood. They keep it well-groomed, and they've upgraded the neighborhood. Eighty-five to ninety percent of the homes in the city of Fulton have infringements on them of one kind or another. Most city property, you can't look out of a side window without seeing a driveway, a car, or another house. You usually have to go to the front of your house to see to the street. So I don't know if that's gonna be much different. If there was a garage there, and there was one there that was taken down, and I talked to Mr. Scott, and he said that he would allow them to build a garage, but nothing else, during one of our conversations. If they built a garage, and you put it up on, on two blocks, put an eight-foot wall, and then a pitch on that on your roof, whatever goes above it isn't really gonna change much of anything. You're gonna have the same view, whether you put something on top of it or not. So I don't know what, if it would make a difference to have your apartment up on top. If you put it on the garage, you're gonna be back where you were before. It's not gonna be much different. I've heard varying, you know, views, I've had different input up to why some people don't want it there. Some people, I think, are just jealous. You know, I've gotten responses that these people have too much money, they're just making money on rentals. I was told that. That's not a good excuse. That's not a good reason. You know, because some people economically know how to work with their money, I don't think we should penalize them for that. On the other hand, Mr. Scott has, you know, a valid complaint. He doesn't want his window blocked. So I guess it all depends upon how, what your point of view is, and what window you're looking out of.
I think yes, sir.
No, I don't think so. We could go on and on.
I claimed everybody, nobody did nothing. There's a big difference between a twenty-five-foot building and a single-car garage, which is approximately twelve, twelve-and-a-half feet, to twenty-five to twenty-eight feet high. Number two, this sir alderman was caught walking around in Mr. Johnson's backyard, a neighbor called me at eleven o'clock one night checking the property out. He come around, and I was in my own house the day he surveyed the neighborhood, and he only talked with four or five people, 'cause the rest of them went there, 'cause I talked to him, and I asked him why he didn't come to my house, 'cause I started the complaint first. He said, "I didn't know your home." So if this alderman wants to take the job, I thought he was supposed to be neutral in the things. Is he trying to push this thing as far as...
Look, Mr. Scott, you've got legitimate problems and complaints, but I don't think we want to go into... I don't want to see you get into personalities.
Mr. Scott, this is...
I think everybody is aware of the fact.
Right, you've been to my house three times, I don't think I needed to come and talk to you a fourth time. This is not a trial. You don't have to agree with me or disagree with me.
But you're supposed to be neutral, you're supposed to listen to the people who's in the ward.
I did listen, and I do have a right to walk...
That's enough.
And I do have a right to walk around the ward any time of the day or night I want.
Wait a minute, please, Sal. I have an advantage over Russ. I've been here a lot longer than he has, and many of the houses, in fact, probably ninety percent of them, that are on tiny lots and impeding the view of others, were here long before the zoning ordinance was passed, so of course, their grandfather didn't. I think, too, we should be aware of one fact. Purpose of the zoning ordinance by prescribing the minimum number of square foot that a house or building could be erected on was to preserve space and to alleviate problems that had created in the past by houses being crammed into small lots. The whole idea was to create more open space or preserve it and make the surroundings of the neighborhoods more pleasant. That's why it was enacted in the first place. So when you start putting two buildings on one small lot, then you're defeating the purpose of the zoning ordinance. So there was a good reason for it to begin with. Sal?
Thank you, Mayor. Having gone down there with Mr. Bell Fiore to Russ's property, I noticed that Russ and Mr. Regal, they've done a fine job, in my opinion. Again, I live in the fourth ward, but just having gone down there, because Mr. Bell Fiore indicated, "Look, they're gonna be doing some work here," so we took a ride down. And I'll tell you, the entire ward, there are people hanging out all over the place. I'm sure that they don't own their own homes, they're renters. The place looked, the places around there were trashy, dilapidated homes. Here we have two young men who are energetic, you know, the heartbeat of Fulton. Think of it, these are young men who are taking the time to take residences, which were in really rough shape, and they're doing work to those residences, and when I looked at it, I couldn't believe it, they did a nice job. They should be commended for what they've done. Now, I don't know, I haven't looked at those, what they proposed to do. That's gonna be your prerogative, and you guys can take a look at that, but what they've done so far is commendable. And I think that if we could have more people like this in the city of Fulton, instead of these absentee landlords who don't do anything, we had more people like Mr. Regal and Mr. Johnson, the entire ward would be looking very good. And I, as a landowner, would be very happy to have them around the neighborhood fixing up the properties. I live next door to an old residence now, three family, which, they're trashing the place, and now the guy bought an electric guitar. I have to listen to that. These people don't care, and it's a dump. It's a dump, and I, I, as a landowner, I object. I object that I've put money into my residence, and these people, these absentee landowners are doing nothing. Here we got a guy, both of these young men, they're doing something here in the city of Fulton.
I couldn't agree with you more, Sal. The only problem is, we get a lot of complaints about our failure to enforce the zoning laws. Now, if you're gonna grant one exception to the zoning code, you will not be able to deny anyone else. You can take the zoning code, and you can tear it into shreds, and that's what's going to happen. So we either have a city of laws... So we either have a city of laws, or we don't. And you, as a lawyer, should appreciate that fact. Now, that means that people in anywhere in the city in R2 can put an unlimited number of buildings. Where's the, where do you stop? Two, three, four, what? And so what do you have? You're going to have a lot of buildings in a small space, and someday those buildings, just as it's happened in the city now, are going to become older and dilapidated, and nobody's going to want to fix them up. And then the city goes through another cycle of trying to get rid of old buildings that nobody wants.
I think you have to look at each case on its own individual merits, so...
You can't look at each case on its own individual merits, John. The law is, if you grant an exception to one person, you're entitled to be treated equally, and you must grant an exception to others as well. It isn't that simple.
Right. But if they didn't maintain their properties, yeah, then I could see, well, yeah, we shouldn't do it. But if they're maintaining the properties that they already have and they want to improve upon that, then, you know, we should make allowances if they can take care of the properties and they've done that, and go ahead and let them do that.
Well, Russ?
If I may. Mr. Valet, you're the attorney. Familiar with zoning?
Yeah.
What is a variance? What's a variance to zoning?
Variance means, no, a variance, no. A variance means that if you are, your building is in violation or will be in violation of setback lines, then you can be granted a variance so that even though you would be in violation.
I've got a question that I just, Diane, I have to ask it. Mayor, Spencer's not here, but it's my recollection that with a special use permit, if the property is sold or the title is transferred, doesn't the property have to go back to its original use?
Yes, it does. It reverts back to its original state, and then whoever buys the property has to come back before the common council and/or the bodies governing that property and apply for the same type of use.
So if there's nothing there now, then we're not going back, we don't have an original use, right?
No.
That was my question. Well, you know, the other thing I had, point of interest, and Russ did clear that up, was the two petitions, you know, everybody went to a lot of work to get those done and all, but there can't be that many people that live within 100 feet of the one house, or just, you know.
That probably makes sense, yeah. It's a very astute application.
The other question I asked John here that we haven't even talked about yet, not to beleaguer this thing any, but if case there were a fire, I don't think anybody's addressed those issues. Should there be a fire to either one of the buildings on the one lot and how it affects that neighborhood? Maybe we ought to put this in the ball, the code enforcement of the fire department to take a look at their plans and specs and...
Well, if there was a fire in the new house and it affected Mr. Scott's place, yeah, you'd have a problem. So would the city. A legal problem.
Having granted a special use permit for that, should there be a fire there or something and being 17 feet from Mr. Scott's house?
Yeah. Definitely could create a problem.
Now, there's a lot of, a lot of this.
Well, without kicking a dead horse, I'm sure there's other issues pushing, like Mr. Lanza had one next.
How many more do we have to have? And when you went down Seneca Street, I'm not a slum lord. I own my own house.
I didn't say that you were...
And that one block is the only one left in the sixth ward that's any good.
If you have anything to say, please come up front and say it. We're not going to have a colloquy between people. Yes?
I just made the statement that I live on Seneca Street, in the sixth ward. And if you go up Seneca Street or any part of the sixth ward, there are some of us that take care of it. And on Seneca Street, it's our block that's the only one left.
There are many nice homes in the sixth ward.
Well, yes, there is. But I mean, it's the only one on Seneca Street that isn't, that hasn't got a bunch of apartments. We're the only ones that have got residential left. And we've all tried to take care of it. And some of us are limited.
I'm sure you have, because I know there's been a lot of improvements made there in the sixth ward.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Phil, do you want to say something?
No, it was that the R2 called for 8,000 square feet of property for two family residents. That's the only thing that should pertain to this particular special use permit. That's all. That's in the building code.
Thank you. I want to point out, too, that that special use permit that was granted for Mr. Zeller, the only residence where that was granted, this was, he had gone ahead and done that before this council was even convened and before I was elected mayor. So he already had an apartment under a mistake assumption that he had the right to do it, that it was a permitted use, according to information he had previously from the previous zoning officer. So that there was a real hardship case. And that was one of the reasons why I believe the council okayed and granted it. Anyone else? Anyone from the council?
Thanks.
Thank you. I don't know. Public hearing is closed. I would frankly move to table this until the next meeting to give the city attorney an opportunity to research the validity of public uses before the council acts on it.
Okay, I agree with that, but is the city attorney going to be available to do any research? When is he coming back? And if he isn't going to be back, could someone else look into it so we could bring some type of closure to this issue?
I'll look into it myself. Is there a second on the motion to table?
I don't think there is. Please. One second.
I moved it.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Do you or not? I'm still a member of the council.
We'll let you join the club. Go ahead.
Thank you. I did. Roll call vote, please.
Fourth ward?
No.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
First ward?
No.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
The motion to table is hereby carried.
Okay, item two, please.
City clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting relative to a purchase of the Merrill Gilliland property located in the corner of West Second Street, West Broadway, Fulton, New York. Mayor declares the hearing open.
Carol, do you have something to say about this?
Carol Hatlins, Fulton Community Development Agency Director. I've heard an awful lot of conversation both ways, whether the city should buy the building or not. And I would just like to say that it should be strictly a city decision, either to get involved with West Side Merchants, buy the parking lot, charge a special assessment, and hopefully try to rejuvenate the area over there economically. If and when this comes to pass, my lease is up at the end of '93, and I would be a willing participant in a lease agreement with the city, which would help to defray some of the cost of acquiring the building. I have a problem with space right now. Anyone who's been in my building recently knows that I've added a couple of people on staff. We are now using a downstairs conference room full-time, which every time I have a meeting, I have to kick people out of, literally, who are trying to work. And if we stay where we are, we will stay where we are, only for a limited period of time. I probably would sign a lease over there for another year only and start looking for larger space. So if the city is interested in purchasing the parking lot with the idea that the building would come along with the parking lot, I would be more than happy to be a tenant in the building. I wouldn't mind having the city as my landlord, and hopefully I'd have a little bit more control over my destiny as well.
Thank you, Carol.
Carol, do you feel that there's adequate space in the other building over there?
We're talking 1,300 feet, 1,300 square feet in the basement area, which is, would be all used for storage. And it's a very large, seems to be a very dry basement. 1,300 square feet on the first floor and an additional 1,300 on a second level. Right now, we are, I think, in around 900 on our first floor, and we have a basement, which is not all usable space at about 825. And if anyone's been in my building, they know that we have a very large kitchen area, we have a very large storage area. So really, the only usable space is the conference area, and we have a room that has a couch and a desk in it. So it's getting tighter, I think.
One more key question. Should all of this transpire, what kind of term of lease would you consider?
Well, I would hope that I could be locked in for a period of five to 10 years at the same. I would like to try to negotiate a rent that would be a continuous rent, that would not be escalating every few years. I think one of the things that's happening with the government in general is that there are more programs coming down the pipe, but they have very little administrative monies now associated with them. And trying to carry a high rental and trying to pay the cost of salaries and the fringe benefits and everything else, you know, it could be money that I might be able to use elsewhere in looking for grants or writing grants or whatever. I'd like to try to cut back on my dollars if I could. Maybe paying less salary.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Carol, do you see opportunities on the west side? If you moved in there, things you could do to help the people over there?
Well, we had a, in '84, I think, we had a program, a facade program only. And we didn't have full participation over there. I think that they've had some pretty lean years since then, since the parking lot has been closed. And a lot of people feel that opening the parking lot is going to increase the traffic in that area generally. I think we bring a lot of people into an area as well, and I'm not sure that, I'm not saying that they're going to go over there and they're going to go shopping on a daily basis. We see 40, 50, 60 people in my office on a daily basis. If they're in and out, they might do some business on the west side. The important thing is, is opening that parking area going to make a significant difference to the merchants on the west side. And if that's the case, then, you know, the city should look very, I think, very hard at doing it. But there is also a special assessment, which has been kind of kicked around, and we know that the downtown merchants pay a special assessment right now for maintaining of the parking and the mall areas. There's no fee for parking downtown. Well, it would probably have to be a similar kind of arrangement, I would assume, you know, for the west side merchants as well.
If you get 50 or 60 people in your office a day, where are the people going to park to go to the stores?
They're not all there at the same time.
Right, but if you have that much traffic flow.
I mean, on staff, right now, I have eight people. Ed Vayner had 10. I think he scaled back just a little bit. We only have 20 parking places in our lot. My people are in, they're probably not in for more than 20 minutes at a time. They're in and they're back out again, but it's continuous. We have, like, four housing assistants who are going all day long. People in to see me, people in to see, you know, Jeff. So it's a constant thing, but it's probably not more than half an hour, 20 minutes at a crack.
So the people that come to you for assistance are, of course, you don't get 50 or 60 at a time.
No, all during the day.
All during the day. Okay. Thank you, Carol. Anyone else? Ann, do you want to speak?
I'm Anne Mira Beto Snyder, and I'm president of the Chamber of Commerce. I'm here tonight to speak to you on behalf of both the Greater Fulton Retail Council and the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce, both of which organizations strongly endorse the proposal that's before you tonight. I think the thing that is important to keep in mind is that this proposal is not a handout for local business. The chamber board was very specific about endorsing the proposal if two conditions were met. One is that the west side merchants must contribute to the upkeep of the parking lot. And I think the proposal you're looking at would allow for that. And the second is that the proposal should be accomplished without being an undue burden to the taxpayers. And I think that the proposal you're looking at does that also. I think that with the probable coming of Kmart, with the close of KBC, it's increasingly important that we do what we can to support our local businesses, to build sales tax revenues. And I think this proposal is a good way for you to do it. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ann. Phil?
Mayor, council members.
Do you want to give your name, please?
Oh, my name's Phil.
I don't think everybody...
If anybody doesn't know me, my name's Phil Blair. I went over and I did a little research over in that area that the city's proposing to buy. First off, I don't think the city should become landlords at the expense of the taxpayers of the city. Secondly, I have an area, the parking lot area is about 95 by 100. And right in front of it, there's parking for about 10 to 14 cars, right across from Mira Beto's store over there, who has a parking lot across the street for his customers, plus they have Fudgie's Pizza over here. The thing I'm thinking about is, by the time we get through rearranging this parking lot, you're going to have parking for about 24 more cars. And in checking with the merchants going down the street here, I find the merchants are parking in front of their own stores. So I mean, you know, how are you going to generate customers if you're parking in your own stores? And at the same time, I've been over there constantly within the last two weeks, and I've always been able to find a parking spot. I've never had a problem finding a parking spot over there.
That's because those places aren't doing much business.
Well, at the same time, you only have one business that is public accessible to the parking lot out back, and that's Jim's Breakfast House.
Oh, that's not true. You've got three or four of them that are on West Broadway.
You want to go over me with George?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go over. I'll go over with you anytime. I checked them all out. I went to every store. I went to every store.
As a matter of fact, you know, I've been in what used to be the rental's place. They had accessibility a long time ago.
You can't get into Hart Gray's from the back.
Well, you could if you wanted to open it up.
You can't get into Kate's Stop Shop from the back.
Again, if you wanted to open it up, you could.
They got to open it up.
Why should you open it up if there's no parking? I mean, all these stores but on the parking lot, all you got to do is put a door in.
Well, some of them don't. Some of them don't. Some of them but on this other parking lot over here, in back of Marty's.
In back of Marty's?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Marty's Down House over in that area.
Well, those are, I know, I'm talking about the ones on West Broadway.
All right. But at the same time, you have 10 to 12 parking lots, parking spaces right here. Does that mean you're going to put the sidewalk back in there and remove those parking spaces?
I don't know what you're talking about, what parking spaces. Is that on Second Street?
Yeah.
And you're going to remove what?
You're going to remove those 10 parking spaces, right?
Why would you want to do that? I don't understand.
Well, you're going to have to have a driveway to get in there. How are you going to get in there?
Well, there's penetrates. There always has been. And the only reason you can't get in there now is because Gilliland's got those big blocks and...
Marty, the way I figured it up, you're going to need 144 square feet per car. That's what the city had, right? 16 by 9?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what the spaces are.
All right. The way I figured it up is if the city goes for 10 years on this thing, and I have assumed proposal of $115,000 now, whether this is correct or not, somebody told me it was correct. It would be, over a 10-year period, it would cost the city taxpayers about $143,000. And I don't know if we'd still have to pay the county tax on this piece of property or not. Plus, I'm under the assumption, and I was told that the Fulton Community Development wants to pay $1,000 rent, which doesn't...
The rent, the rent would just about amortize the mortgage or the bond.
Or the bond, if we got it at 3%.
Yeah.
All right. Well, it'd be about $1,300 a month, correct?
I don't know the exact figures, but it was figured out by someone, and they figured out it would come just about the, the rental would just about pay the bond.
About $1,341.79.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, the city doesn't pay county tax.
Okay, secondly, we'd have to maintain that parking lot. Now, who's going to be responsible for remodeling the building, should we purchase it?
That we'd have to work out with Carol.
And secondly, we have part of...
Well, to initially occupy it, see... Well, to, to initially occupy it, uh, CDA would have to-
All right, part, part of the, uh, Fulton Community Development Corporation is, is funded by the taxpayers of Fulton, correct?
No, it's funded by the federal government.
All of it?
Yes.
I, I find that, I'm asking questions.
Well, it's, nothing wrong with that. That's how you find out.
Uh, secondly, will we have to pay county tax on that?
No. The city doesn't pay any taxes on city-owned property.
Okay, so we'd lose about ten thousand dollars in tax revenue on the property, right? Over ten years, because the taxes on that piece of property right now is, uh, one thousand twenty-six dollars and twenty-six cents.
True.
Okay?
In the eleventh year, you get it all back.
In the eleventh year?
In the twelfth year, you start making money. In the eleventh year, you recover all the taxes, and in the twelfth year, you start making money.
What I'm saying, at the same time, this city is in so desperate need of funds that-
Exactly. And what is one of the reasons that we are losing money in this town? It's revenue because of lost sales tax.
And businesses closing down.
If Kmart goes in there, what assurance do you have that these smaller businesses in town are gonna be able to maintain what we have now?
Because smaller businesses in other towns, when Kmart, Walmart moved in, have maintained. They've adapted. The Swiggo is now standing the example of that, right next door to us. Kmart, Walmart do not cover everything. They do not offer a hundred percent.
Well, I really think this is something that should be put on hold for a while until, until we find out what, if Kmart's coming in here.
First place, uh, you can't put it on hold indefinitely because he's gonna do something else.
Well, if-
Secondly, we're, you know, we're not only desperately in need of funds, we're also desperately in need of, uh, expanding and enlarging our business. And by refusing to do something for those stores, remember, they had that for many, many years, and they always did well over there. Now, are we gonna continue to, uh, treat west side as a stepchild while we concentrate on the east side? Are we going to treat them equally and give them an equal opportunity and to encourage business to come into this city? Are we just gonna keep saying no until we, it's too late?
I'm not against encouraging business. I'm not against helping businesses. The only thing I'm against is the city, it seems like every time we turn around, the city has got all kinds of money to come up and buy property.
I don't know where you get that idea, Phil, 'cause that simply isn't true. Uh, and here's an opportunity to get a piece of property at practically no cost to the city, so it's costing us a thousand dollars a year to encourage maybe as many as a half a dozen businesses to move in there?
If it's such a hot piece of property, why doesn't a businessman buy it?
I have no idea. I have no idea.
Phil, what did you say the taxes were on that land and school tax combined?
Uh, one thousand twenty-six thousand forty-six cents.
One thousand what?
One thousand twenty-six.
Okay, a little over a thousand dollars.
Yeah, right.
Not to take anybody down another road, but I'm going to. You have a, uh, a piece of, of land there and building that supposedly we're gonna pay, I don't know, a hundred-
What?
In excess of a hundred thirty thousand dollars, and there's only a thousand dollars taxes on it, yet we have property in the city of Fulton that people would be lucky if they got fifty-eight thousand dollars for their property and they're paying eighteen hundred dollars in taxes. Tell me we don't need to reassess our taxes.
Well, I don't think that property over there is assessed high enough, really, because you got that parking lot in there.
No, not when you have single drawing homes that are paying eight to nine hundred dollars more, and they're not gonna get a hundred thirty thousand for their property.
Now, if we take over that parking lot, are we gonna lease this out to the, uh, lease-out sections of this parking lot? Or is it gonna be a city parking lot?
It would be a municipal lot. And one thing that I said was that if we're going to take on another municipal lot, it better be kept up better than the one we have, otherwise we don't need to take on another one.
Because I, I know there's, there's, uh, interest in, uh, from parties in the area that would like private parking space in that parking lot. And I'm a little concerned about that. Is it gonna be a municipal parking lot or is it gonna be, uh, leased out? We gonna lease out some of it?
No, it's not gonna be leased out, it'd be a municipal parking lot.
Because at eleven o'clock, you gotta get out of the parking lots.
There would have to be a, an assessment, though, for those businesses there if we did purchase them.
Yeah.
Well, I just think we're a little tight on cash to be buying property, gentlemen. I don't know how you feel about it.
Anyone else? Jim?
Good evening. Jim Maravito, the owner-operator Maravito's Big M. I guess the issue at this point, I had written a speech, but we're, in the essence of time, we're gonna dispense with it. I guess the issue is whether or not it will help the merchants. And there, there could be some hesitation, how can you speculate into the future? Instead of going to the future, let's go to the past. Before that lot was closed, we had Dempsey's Sport Shop, Cut &amp; Curl Beauty Salon, and Gretchen's Lady Shop. Within days of that lot being closed, Dempsey's closed, Cut &amp; Curl closed, and Gretchen's closed. I'm not sure how many of you shop in a women's shop, but there is not one in the city of Fulton that I'm aware of. Dempsey's did not relocate to the city, and the owner of the beauty salon did not open a new beauty salon in the city. It was successful six, seven years ago. I believe that it would be successful today. A thousand dollars in lost sales tax revenue? I know that my business alone would contribute more than that. In fact, I figure just about double that amount if that lot is open. Any retailer knows that he cannot, he can do better when he's with other stores than when he is by himself. That's why they're building malls today. That's why you see so many people going to Great Northerden Mall, Carousel Mall, because there's a cluster of stores. We're not trying to duplicate that here, but if you have a cluster of stores in the city, in an area, they all feed off each other, and I think it would be a very successful venture. If it didn't work by some chance, then you've got the building, you can sell it. If it's worth that much today, it'll be worth that much tomorrow. It'll, it will only appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it raises a good point, that the increased sales tax will probably, uh, pay many times over the loss of real estate taxes. Sal?
Hi, Mayor. Sal Vitor Alonso of Fulton. Um, Mayor, first of all, you understand that I'm purchasing, the members of the council, I'm purchasing a building at one eighteen West Broadway, a three-story building, which had overdue taxes. And the parking, when I was purchasing the building, individuals told me, well, you're gonna need parking. I went through the zoning board, talked to Steve Lund, and, you know, in researching it, its grandfathered in, and you even indicated that to me at the, uh, one of the meetings that, with regards to the parking. It's a building that's been there for a hundred years. I'm happy to say that the owner of the building has paid after three years, uh, from what her attorney told me last week, has paid the fifteen thousand dollars in overdue taxes due to the city. The closing is coming due. I'm gonna need that parking. But I went one step further last week. My wife and I purchased Maud's Townhouse. We now, the closing is gonna be coming due. Um, I've already, uh, purchase offer has been, uh, accepted. They hold down payment. Um, the owners are in Florida, and they're decent, fantastic people to deal with. It's got tremendous parking in the back. I, I looked at the survey and walked, walked the, uh, property, um, with my wife, with the, uh, agent, for the, um, for the Joneses, Maud Jones. And, uh, now I have the parking that I need for one eighteen West Broadway. I'm now gonna have Maud's Townhouse, which I'm now in the process of obtaining an architect. Gotta obtain a building, um, well, I'm gonna talk to Steve Lund. I gotta find a contractor. I have to find an electrician, a heating and air conditioning guy. Gotta find a number of people that are gonna, because I wanna do something with the property. Um, and we're gonna pay taxes. I have no problem doing that. And with the parking, parking, I'm gonna open it up to the city, to the city of Fulton, free of charge. Mr. Maravito wants to use it for his employees, because maybe they're taking up, uh, parking at his place, they can park on my property, right in the back. And I don't know, there's a lot of parking there, 'cause I walked it with Mr. Ralph Uyghur, and there is a lot of parking in the back. It extends, the property extends right to the fringe of, um, Mr. Gilliland's property. So we walked it right where his posts are, and I have a survey, and I'm gonna redo another survey. Those big square blocks are gonna go. I'm gonna have a big crane come over and take them out of there, 'cause I don't need them. And, um, the parking's gonna be open. There's a ten-foot, first of all, there's two ways to get into the property. From West Broadway, next to, uh, Hard Gray's Pharmacy, uh, Mr. Lonza Fain's, um, premises. And then there is a ten-foot right-of-way next to the barber shop. You look at the survey, there's a ten-foot right-of-way which is, can be used by, uh, all members to go in there. If you look back at the deeds, they used to talk about teams of horses, men, and their horses could go through. It's still a right-of-way in existence. And that's how you can get in. Two ways to get on the property, from what I understand. I'm not gonna close it up. I wanna be able to work with, uh, Jim's, you know, Breakfast House. Anywhere people wanna park there, it's open, free of charge. If it has to be tarred, you let me know about it. We'll get the guy to come over there, the men, women, whoever has to tar it, and they're gonna tar the place and it's gonna look good. If it has to have handicap parking, I'm gonna do the handicap parking. I'm gonna have the lines, whatever it has to, whatever has to happen for the west side. All right, that's my commitment. That's how strongly I feel about it. All right? We're gonna take back Fulton.
So with the parking for Maud's place and Gilliland, that opens up the whole thing?
You're gonna mega, you're gonna have a lot of parking. A lot of parking for, you know, again, I'm not sure how much, what we're gonna do with Maud's. I'd like to make it into, rent it out into a commercial establishment, someone from Fulton who has a business interest that would be able to go there and say, yeah, I, I'd like to rent it out from you, Mr. Lonza, for, um, to put in a salon or whatever could go in there. And upstairs, it says has fire damage, but it's, it, it's not that bad. I walked it with, with my contractor, we can gut it out, we can do the work, and it's gonna look nice. We're gonna do it properly. The electrical was strewn throughout the house. I can't even believe that the, that it was within code. So-
Maybe it wasn't.
Possibly. And we're gonna, the parking, though, I was very impressed with the parking in the back. I'm willing to open it up. Obviously, I'm gonna need parking for, um, for one eighteen West Broadway. That clears up my parking problem as far as I'm concerned. And, uh, parking, uh, for whatever goes into Maud's Townhouse, whatever's gonna go in. It's a, it's a two-bedroom apartment upstairs. And I'd like to open it up to, uh, I, I'm not gonna be somebody that's gonna say, well, you can't park here unless it's infringing on, on my, um, uh, commercial tenants. But there's so much parking back there, I, I think I counted thirty spaces. You know? But I'm gonna leave that up to somebody like an engineer that can design it for me and do it nicely. And then, when we open it up, Mr. Maravito's employees wanna park there or his patrons, okay? I'd lead by example, Mr. Maravito, okay? All right? Wants to park there for free, doesn't matter to me. Fantastic. He's a, he is a, he's a good man. He does a good thing for Fulton. Then Breakfast House, same thing. They wanna park there, fine, fine with me. Mr. Lonza Fain's clients wanna go back to Mr. Lonza Fain, that's fantastic. Yes, that's fine with me, too. Let's start opening this up to promote business in the city of Fulton. Keep it here. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Jim?
I'm Jim Schatz from, uh, Jim's Breakfast House. And I had these petitions laying out on my car for about a week, is all. And this, some of the people that, uh, decided to live in the city of Fulton. Thought it was a good idea to buy that property and make it in the parking lot for the whole west side. I believe it generated a lot more business on it.
You think that's gonna increase your business?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. I don't open on Sunday now because there's no place to park on Sunday over there with the church.
Oh, that's right.
And you, you can't find a place on Broadway.
They take up all the places?
Right.
And you don't even open up on Sunday?
No.
No? Interesting.
And that's the main reason we don't, is there's no parking out front. So-
Yeah. Are these, uh, customers of yours that sign it?
Yeah, they're all customers that come through and we had it laying on the counter.
How many are there altogether?
It's probably, I think it's a hundred and twenty-three. I was only laid out there for a week, and I didn't force them, I just said, asked them to sign it if they wanted to and what they thought about it, and they signed it.
Okay, we're passing along. Thanks, Jim. Anybody else? Okay. Public hearing is closed. Yeah, we got a-
Mayor, would we be taking any action on this?
Well, my suggestion would be to vote on whether you're interested or not. And if so, then, uh, maybe authorize the city attorney to enter negotiations and come back with the purchase offer. Because if the council isn't interested, there's not much point in going any further. So we can offer a motion for that purpose alone.
Uh, are we gonna maintain the building? And once Carol moves in there, are we gonna maintain the building?
Carol?
Like if any major problems happen with the building, are we gonna maintain it in the city of Fulton, or will you absorb those costs?
Uh, we had talked about that to the survey before, and I said that I could probably do this, um, I, I, if we did one of your, uh, ten, sort of, if the team, or the heating system or something, I would, you know, probably not be able to absorb that. But if it were, you know, something wrong with the electricity, if you wanted it-
But in any case, you feel up to-
I could do it, I could do some small items, sure.
What's the condition of the building now?
Um, I believe it's in excellent condition. Um, I, the building inspector I thought was gonna go over and take a peek at it for the city at, at one point, maybe deep within.
At a previous meeting, we authorized either the city engineer, the building inspector to go over and take a look at it.
Well, everything would be contingent upon approval of council anyway. The only thing I'm interested in tonight is whether you're interested, uh, if the price is right and the building's in good condition. Uh, if, if you're not, regardless of that, there's no point in going any further. So we could offer a resolution for that purpose.
As far as the building goes, you know, we have a hard time maintaining the buildings we have now, and here we are, taking an added responsibility. Now, I wanna do everything I can to help the merchants over on the west side, and I would be all in favor of, uh, buying the parking lot. But as far as buying the building, I kinda have grave reservations about doing that. Uh, I think the community development would be a good tenant. I have no problems with that. But, you know, they being on the west side's not gonna totally enhance the development of the west side, you know? The community development should be developing that area over there anyways. They don't have to be on the west side to do it, they can do it from the east side. They don't have to be on the west side to do it, they can do it from the east side.
Well, you've heard Jim Marvito, who certainly knows the west side and certainly knows that area, unreservedly endorsed the parking lot as an important thing for businessmen in that area.
And, and I have no problem with the parking lot, I really don't, it's the building.
Well, he doesn't wanna sell the parking lot separately.
John, I know we talked about this before, but Jeff, I'm looking at it as, as an opportunity for, for the city of Fulton. Uh, it's gonna cost very little, if anything, uh, as Phil said, for ten years. Then after the ten years, looking at it long range, this is income for the city. Plus, you know, we know we can't measure sales tax, but again, as George said, uh, listen to Jim Marvito. It's gonna more than pay for itself. This, this is really a, to me, uh, it's something that, uh, you look at forward planning, you look at progress for our city. This, this is a way we can, we can see our city progress.
Yeah, and if it doesn't work out, you can always sell it.
Your honor?
Yes.
Just to correct one thing that John said earlier, about at the end of the ten years, it would only be one month worth of rent to get what we are collecting in property taxes. In that way, we get a thousand twenty-six, whatever Phil said, a year. And I believe Carol was paying thirteen hundred a month. So we would be getting, at the end of ten years, every month, more than what we're getting once a year in property taxes.
That's right. Okay, you wanna run a resolution by, please, Jim?
Now therefore be resolved, city attorney authorized to negotiate for the common council for the purchase of Merrill Gilmore and property located on the corner of West Second and West Broadway. And get back to this common council for their approval on a future meeting.
So moved.
Could, could we do that at the next meeting? Is that possible?
He's gonna be gone.
You mean pass on it?
To vote on this at our next meeting.
Vote on this motion, or...
No, 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 no.
On a purchase?
The city attorney getting back to us.
How long has he gone for?
Ten days.
Ten days?
Well, whatever he was gonna do in the interim, if he can't do it, I'll do it. I'm sure I could talk to Merrill and, uh, and try to arrive at some figure that we, I present to the council.
You want the seven-twenty meeting to be put down there?
Yeah.
At the seven-twenty ninety-three common council meeting.
I'll move it.
Just, I could include an appraisal of the property?
Well, I don't see what good an appraisal's gonna do. If Merrill wants X dollars, regardless of what the appraisal is, uh, you either take that or leave it.
The value's worth whatever somebody's willing to pay for, I have to think.
Yeah. Willing buyer, what a willing buyer will pay a willing seller.
I remember the old cliche, caveat emptor, let the buyer beware. Remember that. Remember that.
That was in the days of the traveling salesman. Merrill?
Excuse me, uh, Ross.
George, I simply want to hear what's gonna create the city, that's right.
Thank you.
Would it not, uh, thank you, would it not maybe behoove us to try to, uh, get a cost analysis, uh, in terms of what the, um, what the advantages are to the city financially after an indefinite amount of time? Have somebody look into it before we make a vote, uh, as to what's gonna happen? Seems as like it's a good investment, and, uh, we need, we need funds in the city. If that's gonna generate, uh, sales tax for Mr. Marvito's store, God bless it. We've gotta start looking out for the future here of the city. Uh, maybe a cost analysis would, um, disclose just exactly what the city could, uh, gain from that down the road. Wouldn't hurt to do a little investigating, I suppose.
Time is getting short. I mean, your ideas are good, and I wish we'd somebody thought of it two months ago.
It's very difficult to measure sales tax other than the total amount that we get in. You can't, we cannot, we're not privy to the information of how much Jim Marvito turns in in sales tax. So, uh, we'd have to look at the, the total number that we're generating. So that'd be, that would be kinda difficult to, to a cost analysis on sales tax.
Be only an educated guess at best, best probably.
Even if somebody's sales tax didn't increase, you couldn't guarantee it was because the parking lot was open. You know, it might be just the economy had picked up. Those are the intangible amounts. What we do know is that it's not gonna cost us any more than the rent from CDA. And at the end of that ten-year period, we know how much we're gonna get per month after that just from the rent.
Yeah, then we'd recoup all lost taxes in one year, less than a year. Okay, roll call vote, please.
What if the property's only worth, we'll say, a hundred thousand?
Well, what if it's worth a hundred thousand? Well, I mean, who's gonna say what it's worth, John?
Well, I mean, the appraisal will pay what it costs out.
Yeah, and suppose when we went to Merrill and said, "Merrill, this praise here says it's worth a hundred thousand dollars." Merrill laughs and says, "Well, uh, sayonara."
Well, then we aren't wasting the taxpayers' money, tying it up in the past.
I don't know how you can waste a taxpayer's money when you're buying a piece of property that's gonna bring in increased sales tax. It's, it's gonna be paid for by the lease money from CDA. And at the end of ten years, uh, the, uh, income is going to be all the city's. And you'll get as much in one month as you, taxes you're losing in one year. Uh, how you lose money on a deal like that, John, is hard for me to imagine.
Mayor, we've been through this before, can we vote on this?
Yes, roll call vote, please.
What are we, we're voting on just for you to, or to somebody go into negotiations to negotiate a price?
That's all.
I need a second, your honor.
Second.
We're actually voting on the purchase of the property.
No, 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 no. No, it doesn't...
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Thank you. Merrill, can you give me a call tomorrow? Can we set a time to get together? Well, why don't we just get together and...
I know it's a relatively break-even situation in the city, and I think that we could do that during the...
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, give me a call, or, you know, as soon as you're available, give me a call, please. Thank you. Three, please.
Resolved, city chamber will be authorized to establish an account, A fifty-six eighty-one transportation, other canal park, Marina and transfer one hundred dollars from miscellaneous other general government to A fifty-six eighty-one account to establish an appropriation account for a phone for the city Marina office.
Second.
I thought we were gonna set up another account anyway.
So that's for the one down below?
Okay, alright, okay.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Four, please.
Resolved, city clerk is hereby authorized director to advertise for a public hearing to be held on, regular meeting, the council, reg- regular meeting, the council held on July twentieth nineteen ninety-three at seven-thirty P.M. Relative to a proposed local law number four, which would amend section C twenty-five, C sixty-one, C one thirteen dash two, and C eleven point A of the Fulton City Charter.
Motion?
I'll move it.
What do you amend, what, what do you amend?
Why don't we wait for the public hearing, Vern? It's getting late, and, you know, we're gonna go into that in detail. And I'll give you a copy of it if you wanna...
Copies will be available in the clerk's office anyway, right?
Yeah, that's right, they're in the clerk's office.
So the public, they have a chance to get over to the common on it.
Okay. Second, is there a second?
And what, what it is, Karen?
That it's to give the mayor the hiring power?
Mayor would have the part, mayor with the approval of the common council had the power to hire all employees of the city of Fulton. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Five, please.
Resolved, common council authorized payment of the following bills. Agway Petroleum, fourteen hundred seventy-four dollars fifty cents for gasoline. Barra paving, seven thousand five hundred forty-six dollars and fifty-six cents, seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-two cents, and sixteen hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty cents for blacktop. Sterns and Wheeler, fourteen thousand one hundred seventy-one dollars for professional services. Stanley Green Roofing, three thousand six hundred ninety dollars for repairs. Merritt Human Health Division, twelve hundred thirty-five dollars sixty-four cents for supplies. Freight Technologies, twenty-four seventy-four fifty for supplies and equipment. Alikman Plumbing and Heating, twelve hundred thirteen dollars and forty cents for repairs. The above items are over the thousand-dollar charter limit, but are budgeted, but require the common council's approval.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Six, please.
Resolved, scheduled bills payable for the period dated May thirteenth to July first, having been audited by the auditing committee of the common council, are hereby approved.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Seven, please.
Resolved by letter dated June twenty-second from Niagara Mohawk, in which they state, "Due to the development of property currently underway on Challenger Seven Drive, is there a recommendation the city consider the installation of street lighting as follows? To install two one-hundred watt high-pressure sodium streetlights on Niagara Moh- Mohawk Falls thirty-eight dash two and thirty-eight dash three on Challenger Seven Drive. Whereas the common council agrees with the recommendation, now therefore be resolved that Niagara Mohawk Power Corporation be authorized to make the installation as described above."
I'll move it.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Eight, please.
Resolved, the common council authorized payment of the following bill. Lads Agency, nineteen thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars, police professional liability coverage. The amount is budgeted, but is over the thousand-dollar charter limit, requires council's approval.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Nine, please.
This meeting, the council held on June twenty-ninth, all bids for furnishing the city of Fulton with tree and stump removal, which referred to our city engineer Neil Beebe. For his recommendation to be returned to this meeting, whereas per letter dated July second from city engineer Neil Beebe, he has canvassed the bids and recommends that the low bid in the amount of twenty-three thousand four hundred dollars be awarded to Monroe Tree Service. And whereas the common council agrees with the recommendation by the city engineer, it resolved that the low bid of Monroe Tree Service in the amount of twenty-three thousand four hundred dollars is hereby awarded to Monroe Tree Service. Set amount is to be direct charged to the A fifty-one ten forty maintenance of streets account.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
I have one question.
Yeah.
Um, as soon as they do start the work, are we gonna be able to do add-ons? You know, like, normally, it usually happens after they get started, people call and...
I don't know, what was the...
They have an add-on amount on it, on that printout, kind of, of what they will charge per, depending upon the size of the tree.
Maybe that should be capped somewhere. Last year, we went way over with add-ons. Maybe we should have a cap as to how many we're gonna do.
I would say we don't exceed the budget.
Whatever the council decides. Well, I mean, you can't add on until the council approves it anyway.
Right, I just wanna know if we're gonna do that, you know, after they did start the work and...
Not up to me, John, it's up to council.
Well, I wanna get their opinion on it.
How does everybody feel about it?
As long as we don't exceed the thirty-thousand-dollar budget limit.
Okay, I don't mind.
Okay. Who, uh, who do you wanna award it to? Well, he recommended Monroe, Monroe.
George? Do you have a question?
Yeah. John?
Dave Fontecchio, uh, I don't know if my memory serves me right, but I think in eighty-nine or eighty-eight, we had Monroe Tree Service do it. Didn't they, uh, not complete their bid?
Correct.
That's true.
So why, why were they even allowed to bid? I don't understand why they took them as bids.
They're all allowed to bid.
Cause they were low bid and they didn't, they didn't finish the job.
Yeah, yeah, we had problems with them.
The city engineer, uh, investigated that, he was aware of that problem, and found that there is new management that has been, uh, highly thought of by, uh, other communities that have used him. And that was the reason why he made that recommendation. But, good point, Dave. Well, it's up to the council, who do you want?
I mean, there was about a hundred and eighty-dollar difference between Area Lane and Tree and Monroe.
Yeah, I guess that's true. Somebody wanna make a motion to, uh, give a bid to Area Lane? Was it Area, what?
Area Lane.
Got a motion, a second on Monroe. Okay, well, let's have a roll call vote on Monroe.
Okay, on Monroe, fourth ward?
No.
Fifth ward?
No.
Sixth ward?
Yes.
First ward?
No.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Oh, wait a minute, I can't vote on money.
What?
You, you did last week's.
Did I?
Can I introduce a resolution to award Area Lane and Tree Company the, uh...
Not yet, John, we gotta, gotta go on this one.
I was apparently the only one here at that time, and David was right, we had an awful time when Monroe was trying to get them to come back. I guess what they did, come in and did the easy work, and then doing more difficult trees or stumps, or whatever it was that was left, and just couldn't get a hold of them.
Who did it last year?
Excuse me?
Area, Area Lane and Tree Company.
They do a good job?
I think in several cases, they did more than what was expected of them, when it was cleaning up, or fixing sidewalks, or giving us a good price on sidewalks.
Okay, I vote no.
I'll second John's, Alderman Lincoln's.
Mayor votes no, the motion is defeated.
Okay, John has voted, or, yeah. Made a motion to, it's getting warm in here, is it, made a motion to, uh, hire Area, what?
Area Lane Tree Service.
To accept their bid? Roll call vote, please.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward?
Yes.
Sixth ward?
No.
First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Motion's carried, your honor.
Thank you. Ten, please.
You're out.
Yes. Yes, Al.
My name is Al Squiteri, fourth ward. We're on, we're on the subject of trees. I'd like some kind of, uh, safety clause put into that thing, if possible. We lost, as you know, a hundred and twenty-year-old tree that was perfectly healthy. At the expense of twenty-eight hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, Mr. Graham went over with the tree company and naturally asked for their opinion. And they said, "We think it should come down." Ducky not being an expert in trees, the tree came down. I paid a consultant from Syracuse forestry, he came up and looked at it, and said, "There was absolutely nothing wrong with the tree, it was perfectly healthy." So we lost a shade, an air filter, um, automatic air conditioning. I have a house now that has paint peeling off of it because it's being baked by, by the sun. So I think we should be a little more careful before we take trees down in the city of Fulton. In the past, we just went around chopping them down. And we have to have a respect for trees. I may be a little nuts, but I think it has something to do with our own lifestyle. And I think we should have a second opinion, I spoke to Mr. Beebe about that. We can't just have one company who's in the business of cutting down trees tell us, "Yes, that tree has to come down." Who's gonna question it? So I'd like to have someone to be able to check this thing before it gets cut down for a second opinion. I think for fifty bucks, you can have a guy come in from Syracuse and give you his opinion.
Per tree?
Per tree. As of twenty-nine hundred or three thousand dollars, how much of trees go for, Joe, the highest?
Lots.
Need a brand-new tree?
Eight hundred to twelve hundred dollars.
Well, this was a hundred and twenty-year-old tree. And it was about, uh, twenty foot around. It was about twenty-eight hundred bucks to take down, for no reason.
Al?
Yes.
Over here. Where'd you get, never find me, can you? Where'd you get twenty-eight hundred dollars from?
That was a figure I was giving by, uh, city hall, that was paid out on one of your, uh, agreements to cut trees.
Cause I have the bill, three thirteen South Third?
Three seventeen, that's why my tree is down, you don't even know where I live.
The house, next year, they called about this tree?
The house next to me called because there were spent, uh, pencil-sized twigs in the driveway. And Mr. Boynton was called over, he was a friend of the people next door. He wrote you a letter and said, "Jim, have it trimmed." Next thing I know, it's laying on the ground. Floyd Boynton said, "Here's the letter, I'm out of it." I said, "Trim it." And I can't blame anybody in the city except, I have to pick on my alderman, but trees don't come down unless they go through the alderman first, is that right?
That's correct, they have to make the initial call of their alderman.
So what I'm saying is, second, get a second opinion on this thing before we go cutting down trees. And just one more thing, and then I won't hold you up. Skinny Atlas had a problem with this tree business along Main Street. They wanted to leave down fourteen trees to run a sidewalk through. And the people got upset, and they got a petition put together, about two hundred names, and they did the obvious thing. They moved the sidewalk over three foot and saved the trees. And if you drag through Skinny Atlas, they have pride in their city. They take care of their trees. It's not only for our own health, but for our, our own satisfaction. So all I ask is, before you go cutting down trees, get a second opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
George?
The tree, you're right, trees are important.
I'd like to, to read this from Nytoc Arborist concerning the trees talking about. Uh, they're the ones that looked at it, it says, "Completion of work is as follows. Three thirteen South Third, thirty-six inch maple, sugar maple, right side of the driveway. Tree has established decay and a crack on the main leaders, takedown. Equipment and labor, eight hundred and eighty dollars, total eight hundred and eighty dollars. City trees are either assets or liabilities depending on their condition. When I inspected the tree, I noticed extensive decay on the leader near the main trunk of the tree, which leaned over towards the house located at three thirteen South Third. The other leader over the street side also had extensive decay and an existing crack where that leader attached to the main trunk, along with the existing dead wood throughout the tree. The issue was not the health of the tree, but rather the structure of the tree. Even though it was still alive, it was a hazardous tree with much potential of storm damage causing injury or damage to people or property. Other considerations such as pruning, reducing weight, or cabling was not appropriate. Takedown was the best solution in solving this dangerous situation and cost-effective expenditure of taxpayers' money. That's why I had that tree taken down. I would hate to think if we didn't take it down, what kind of a lawsuit we would have if one of those leaders broke off and hit the house of three thirteen South Third. three thirteen South Third, which is next door.
I didn't know you were gonna get into that report, I would've brought mine. And my report is...
Well, yours was after it was taken down.
My report is extremely opposite of that. One leader would've been trimmed, and that tree could've been saved for another fifty to seventy-five years. One branch had to be taken off. Maples tend to shed leaves and branches and twigs. Secondly, the city of Fulton went into your aunt, your aunt's property, and staked and wired a tree that was split down the middle, and the city of Fulton saved that tree, and it's still standing ten years later. My tree was cut down instead of cutting off one single branch that was slit. Now, I have the same report from College of Forestry, and I turned it into this council, and it was extremely opposite of what that gentleman that cut the tree down is telling you. The man that took my survey had nothing to gain or lose, he was a tree expert, and the tree should've been saved, but that tree is gone. You never did put one in its place, but what I'm asking now is, when you go through the city cutting down trees, think about the value of a tree to our lives and to the looks of our city, and for the money, and don't take the word of a tree man who's getting paid to cut down trees and saying that tree has to come down. That's, that's what I'm asking you to do. Furthermore, when the expert got out of the, the car, he looked down the street to Mrs., um, can't remember her name, I said, "Why is that tree standing? That tree is absolutely dangerous, it's dead." And that tree is still standing, three years later. My perfectly good tree is down, a tree that's sitting up there as a highs that you claim is still standing. The woman owns, the woman owns Mrs. Murphy's shop, who is that?
Marion Stanton.
Marion Stanton's shop. And there's also a house in front of, uh, uh, three in front of Mr., um, Phil DeSantis, three people have tripped over the sidewalk, the sidewalk is about eight inches high. I fell over myself, and I know it's there, and they called the city, and I don't know if they called you or not, I can't say today, they want the tree taken down and the sidewalk repaired. He said it's been over a year and a half.
Where is that one?
Phil DeSantis, he lives at, uh...
First house off of Broadway, right?
Second house on Broadway. I told him you would go over and check it out for him. So never been. Excuse me?
We're making an add-on list right now, okay.
Well, I wanna see if it's on the list.
Yeah, I don't mean to put any puns on that.
No, I just want...
I'm trying to repair the sidewalk rather than cut down the tree. But I, I think in the past, we have cut down trees, you know, just without any thought to the future. I don't wanna sound like some ecology nut, but trees are important.
Thank you. Thank you.
In response to what he just said, um, first of all, my aunt's tree, I wasn't even alderman, so I don't know what happened then, and I talked to Tom Malarny of the Nitec, and he said that it's difficult to tell what kind of a shape structurally a tree is in after it's already been taken down, and I think the guy that you had looked at it, looked at it after it was cut down. This is what Tom Malarny was telling me, I'm not a tree expert, I rely on guys like him.
Yeah.
Yeah. But he also had recommended pruning at different times too.
Okay. Let's, I'll look into it, Al, I'll look into it. Carol? Carol?
The city of Oswego has a very aggressive tree planting policy, and I wondered if we have the same kind of money put away on a yearly basis, they only take down trees that are diseased or that are hazardous to people walking underneath or vehicles traveling on the street. There's a gentleman there by the name of Andy Hillman, who I believe is the Assistant DPW Commissioner, who is very involved in, uh, urban forestry programs, and he sent us some information, which I have since sent on to Neil about trying to get some dollars for the city to do a replanting program on a yearly basis. Um, I think he might even be called upon maybe to give us a little bit of assistance with trees, with the trees that might be questionable.
What's his name?
His name is Andy Hillman, and it's Oswego DPW, they apparently have a whole department that is just for tree removal, replacement, uh, that kinda thing in the city of Oswego. And I know they, they have a very aggressive program, they don't take them down unless they absolutely have to.
I just saw his last name, L M A N.
And Neil has all the information on who we need to get information to in order to apply for some grants for funding.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Number ten, please.
Resolved, May fifth, the city of Fulton, common council passed a resolution establishing fee rates for the city of Fulton Marina to be effective on May eighteenth, nineteen ninety-two. Now therefore be resolved that any fee rates collected from the city marina be restricted for use only for marina purposes.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carry. Eleven please.
Resolved, city chamber will be authorized to transfer two thousand dollars from the judgment and claims account to the A fifty-six eighty-one transportation, other Canal Park Marina account.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carry. Eleven please.
Resolved, city chamber will be authorized to transfer two thousand dollars from the judgment and claims account to the A fifty-six eighty-one transportation, other Canal Park Marina account.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carry. Under discussion, we have, uh, city marina fees, there has been a proposal by the supervisor of the marina to change the fees, to bring them more in line with those and other marinas. Council has a copy of it, if anyone would like to look at it, be glad to show it to Any discussion from the council?
I have something, Your Honor.
John?
Um, at our last meeting, you know, we voted to, uh, give Dave Ritchie capital pay for doing the job of, uh, a recreation commissioner, Barry Ostrander. You know, I, I think what we did was a violation of the contract being that if he's doing his, uh, Barry while he's out, okay, uh, he should be receiving out-of-title pay instead of capital pay for Barry's job being that he's in the union.
John, does this have to do with the marina fees?
No, this is...
Are we finished with marina fees?
Yeah, we're all done.
We are?
Yeah. You, you had asked if there was anything from the council.
I meant on the marina fees, I'm sorry.
Oh.
I didn't mean to confuse you on that. Yeah, no, I wonder if anybody in the council has anything you wanna say about the marina fees.
With the marina fees, is this something for us to adapt?
Yeah.
We have a resolution on it?
Well, no, what he wanted you to do, he came into my office and, uh, Ross, and apparently a lot of the boulders are complaining that there's a, there's one charge for, uh, fifty cents per foot per day without electricity, seventy-five cents per foot per day with electricity and water, and he, and he's got these, um, summertime people handling this money, and he checked around with all these different, um, marinas around Oswego and whatever, and he found out that our fees were a little bit high, and, and these fees would be like a, instead of having sixty dollars and seventy-five cents or something like that, he would have just a straight, they, they wouldn't be dealing with a lot of change or anything like that. And he came up with these rates, and he wanted you to look them over and possibly re, re-adopt some new fees at a future meeting.
Okay.
He wanted you to at least look them over.
Oh, I thought you wanted to do it today.
Well, you could, if you wanted to.
We, uh, one of the other problems is the electrical, we're charging extra for it, it's not very dependable. We've had some problems with the electrical, it, it's very old, and it was, right now for the kinds of boats that come into our marina, it's rather inadequate. We added some different breakers on the, on the different slots, but, you know, those are on a first-come, first-served basis, so you can't always charge on, expect to get electric when you pay for electric, because it trips the breakers, someone has to go down and reset the thing again, so it's a real headache. If they get electric, all well and good, and if they don't, that's fine too.
Well, this, this makes it simpler. Okay.
Is that giving, like, every charge for electric and that there is one of the worst, you know, one of the worst problems?
Rescind the old schedule.
Okay. Okay, that's, the resolution would rescind the old rates, uh, and the new rates would be as follows, uh, ten foot to fifteen foot, ten dollars daily, sixty dollars weekly, sixteen to twenty foot, thirteen dollars daily, seventy-eight dollars weekly, twenty-one to twenty-five foot, sixteen foot daily, nine, ninety, sixteen dollars daily, ninety-six weekly, twenty-six to thirty foot, twenty dollars daily, a hundred and twenty dollars weekly, thirty, thirty-five foot, twenty-three dollars daily, a hundred and thirty-eight dollars weekly, thirty-five foot and over, twenty-six dollars daily, and a hundred and fifty-six dollars weekly. That's his proposal.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carry. John, your, uh, that situation with Da, Dave Ritchie is already in grievance, and actually something should be in executive session anyway, if you wanna do it there.
Oh, I didn't realize.
Yeah.
But, John, I've already made arrangements, and I'm gonna discuss that, and a similar situation, and, uh, to the grievance committee, which I'm chairman of, and to bring some resolve to it, so I don't think it would be appropriate to discuss it here.
Your Honor.
Okay, thanks.
Resolved that the resolution dated September twenty-seventh, nineteen eighty-nine, to allow Bruce Clark and Larry Rowley to purchase water for their proposed Pierce Drive development be amended to cap usage at the daily sewage, one twenty-four hour period, flow limit of four thousand gallons per day.
Uh, I thought that was already, uh... No, what, what that was, after a water and sewer committee meeting, we found out that we had actually given them a, a number of gallonage for their sewage, but there was never anything included in the water portion of that, and seeing that they're going to be doing some development up there, um, by the standard rates according to, uh, to Roger, that we, we'd be in the neighborhood of, uh, twenty-five hundred gallons to twenty-eight hundred gallons a day, and I suggested that we probably should give them at least the same gallonage of water as we are sewage, and put a cap on it at that.
Could you talk to Bruce or Larry about that?
No.
Okay, cause I think that that would probably be the only fair thing to do before we acted on that, and I, I wouldn't vote for it, because, you know, we could end up in a lawsuit over it, and I am not in favor of passing this resolution whatsoever.
Since we only have a water meter and not a sewer meter, I really don't see, if we can sell them unlimited water, how we can guarantee we're only gonna get four thousand gallons of sewage back. That's why by doing this, we know that they're not gonna send more sewage back than we give them in water. Like, that's the idea behind this.
Also, though, we're not gonna exceed our capacities that we have available, John.
Wasn't that originally set up for four thousand gallons of water, Dave?
Not, not water.
It didn't stick to water, and that's what we want to do, is give them the same amount of water if we're gonna take some back to sewage. Which is more than...
I followed that thing to the most, boy, that's the way it come across, we was four thousand gallon of water.
Oh, we, we stumbled on this through one of our meetings, and that's what we came up with, and we just wanna rectify and amend that so that it reads that way, that's all.
I think a lot of people assume that.
Did you check the, uh, resolution, Dave? The one that was passed?
Yeah, it's sewage. Roger, do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
I don't really, uh, water and sewer are only land use, but, uh, cap of water and sewer.
Okay. You have a motion? I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed.
Right here, I oppose it.
Carry. Anything else from the council?
Yeah, just concerning what you said a few minutes ago about whether or not you can break a tie on money matters, I'd like to get that cleared up so we know where we stand, I know what Spencer read last week out of the charter, I talked to Fred Sumner last week, I think Lincoln may have talked to, talked to Jerry.
Yeah, I did, I, I called Jerry Marbido.
City attorney, and I talked with Vern, and when Merrill was here and I was on the council, we've always been on the opinion that what that section of the charter meant was that just about all of our money is raised through taxes and assessments, so we didn't interpret it as meaning we would have to add on a new tax to spend whatever money comes up, it's that any money we spend is through, uh, the taxes already collected or assessments.
Well, maybe what we oughta do, or the council should do, is to, uh, clarify it and amend it, so it is very specific. You wanna do that?
Sure.
Okay. I think it's, you know, something that should be done, rather than have to rely on interpretation. Uh, anything else from the council? Any from, from the audience? Yes. Uh, excuse me, are you gonna raise that issue about your position?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, that's a personnel matter, it'll have to be in executive session.
Am I invited to the executive session?
Certainly.
When?
Tonight, we're gonna adjourn to an executive session. Okay, motion to adjourn to an executive session.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carry.[1676.47]